For the whole meeting for November 3, 2016, I call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's absent. Cammer?
Here.
Carbinero?
Here.
Danny?
Yes, here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item we have on our committee meeting this evening is under planning and zoning. Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have only one item on planning and zoning tonight, the Bluff City Industrial Park proposal by Acton Mobile. I'd like to turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Trustee Ranky. This is a petition. Dean Kelly, who's with us in the audience, on behalf of Bluff City LLC. The property is located in our Bluff City industrial area, kind of the internal part of the industrial area. And what they would like to do is to amend their preliminary PUD plan to allow for outdoor storage of truck and trailer storage on a 10-acre parcel of land that previously had been designated for a concrete plant. Dean has entertained a contract with Acton Mobile Trailer Corporation that would like to lease this space for outdoor storage. He would like to amend his general site plan and then allow for Acton to take over the west half of the property and then to also include some outdoor truck and trailer storage on the east half of the 10-acre parcel of land. To do that, he needs to amend his preliminary PUD plan and then also provide a, get a special use for revising the PUD. Just some information, this is how it looks right now. This is the, this is the approved plan. And again, this is the approved general site plan. And in the middle, it's hard to see on this one. But in the middle, right here, is the area we're talking about. And this is where the concrete plant was originally designated. We would also like to maintain the concrete plant use for that site and move forward and to allow Acton to move into this property and then also clean it up and then put in some landscaping. Dean is here with, here if you have any questions. And he's looking to move forward through the plan commission.
Well, my first question is, how is the land actually being used today?
Okay, currently, on the Acton parcel, we, Bluff City Materials has a maintenance facility and storage. And we've secured another location in Elgin to move those operations. And then we also have some storage on the, on the 10-acre parcel. Jim mentioned some trailer storage. We're going to consolidate that into five acres, screen it a little bit better, clean it up. And then, of course, Acton, they've entered into a fairly long-term lease. And they, they'll store and repair, they'll repair construction trailers inside the building that we have currently, and then they'll store the trailers outside. And they're the typical mobile office-type trailers that you would see. I think there's an operation at Spalding and Gifford in Elgin that's very similar to that.
And so you're not going to be, this isn't a situation where you're going to see a tremendous amount of truck traffic with taking the, the trailers on and off. It seems like it'd be a long-term...
It's very, yeah, it's a very, yeah, they may have a, a couple moves a day, but yeah, certainly very little traffic because of the size of the, of the units.
And what are you going to use as a surface?
So we're going to, we're going to maintain a grindings, which is an asphalt grinding surface for the yard. And then we're going to do some pavement. Right now, there's no pavement. We just have grinding. So we'll maintain most of that for the yard. And then around the building, we will put some asphalt paving in, just, just around the building to help their operation, clean it up a little bit, too.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? So then we'll move this on to the plan commission?
This is the plan commission.
I have a question. Could we touch base a little bit on the dedicating Graham Street? What kind of discussions were had with that?
Graham Street is, let me get back to this. We have a confluence of two counties. And the county line is right here. Graham Street is dedicated in this location and up into this area. And it's fully improved and, and, and is a typical industrial park road. As you transition into the Kane County portion, it really becomes a driveway. And I think there's a long-term plan to do some work with maybe realigning this road and coming out at a better location at Route 25. But it really is a driveway at this point. We've talked about doing the dedication. Maybe Dean, you can address that. But it needs to be upgraded to our fully industrial park standard before we would accept it with sewer and, and storm sewer and all that. So at this time, I don't know if they're prepared to do that.
Do any other businesses use that right-of-way besides...
Welch Brothers, right?
There's an agreement. Dean, you can go on your driveway agreement.
Yeah, I mean, Welch Brothers uses it. Some of our users in Bluff City Industrial Park use it. Not as much now that we have Blue Heron that's under development. We have the signal at Kenyon. And of course, you have the main Vulcan Boulevard that goes out to Gifford Road. So we, you know, we really haven't talked about it and addressed it. I don't see a real need to, to upgrade it. I'm not sure what it would really do because it's, it's not, you know, it's, it gets used, but I don't see a benefit, certainly wouldn't be a benefit to us to, to upgrade it at this point.
I would add that in, under the underlying annexation agreement, it allowed them to keep that as a private drive. So they would come in and petition, and they wanted to change it out. But that was one of the terms, partly because it was between their piece and the Welch piece and who was to maintain it. There's been some disagreement between the owners relative to that. But it's really always a secondary private access.
With it not being a right-of-way for the village, is there any problems that could occur from our standpoint, from a village standpoint?
Not in, in terms of the use of it, no. And just to point out that Acton is going to increase some of the stormwater detention. Sometime, we've had some, some issues with some ponding in this location, which is in unincorporated Kane County. And again, if this were to ever be dedicated, what we'd like to do is make sure that this access road that comes out in a better location on Route 25, it's not, if you increase the traffic on here, you have to do something with this. As Dean pointed out, we have the road that's going down here to Kenyon, which is the traffic signal. That's the better route for getting out on the 25 rather than coming through here.
And there's really nothing back there, but the people that work there.
Right.
I'm not concerned from a liability standpoint because it's a private road. And as Jim pointed out, we really wouldn't want it dedicated until it was built to our standards. So as it stands, there's nothing to compel them to upgrade the road surface itself if there's a need in the future. Whereas that, if that, say, unincorporated piece came in and you're going to clean up the access point and improve it, the access as well as, you know, the street surface there, perhaps that would be the time then where the stretch between where it ends and the county line could be improved at that point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for moving the meeting, too, Thursday.
Yeah. That was, that was not a real selfish act. It was for everybody that's here today. Yeah.
All right, so we'll, we'll move this on to the plan commission, and then that's all for planning and zoning this evening.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item we have is under Finance and Golf Committee. Chairman Danny?
Thank you. President Wallace, the next item on our agenda here is the 2016 proposed property tax levy. And I would ask staff to do this. Please, Todd, would you introduce yourself for us, please? I know you don't, you don't look like Jeff.
Thank you, Chairman Danny. Yeah, I feel like I need a name tag on. My name is Todd Doudin. I'm the Acton Finance Director as of yesterday. So I'm, I'm pleased to be able to...
Welcome.
I want to hold your applause.
Chad's been with the village, I think, as my note said, for 15 years. So he, he's been around a while and understands the financial situations well.
And I'm happy to present the proposed property tax levy.
I'm going to interrupt you for one minute. If you keep it under five minutes, you will get a round of applause.
Five?
Okay. Three.
Okay, good. If I can...
Is this a different computer, Jim, or is this the same one you had problems with before?
Right. And Jeff never had those problems.
They worked earlier today.
Okay, thank you. Just in general, then, here, that, there's three reasons why we, we levy taxes. That's for the general fund, general expenses, the general obligation bonds, and the police pension, police pension fund, our funding. You see it on your property taxes that when it says village pensions, that's just the police, police pension portion that we're looking at. Once the total levy is, we've levied, the state divides it between the three counties that we're in. Cook County, DuPage-Kane, we're about 38, a little over 38 percent. And then a little over 61 percent in Kane. Right now, we're about 0.2, 0.2 percent in Kane County with a little over 61 percent in DuPage County. Okay, there we go. All right. The, the beginning of the levy starts with the budget. So we already did the hard part back in April where we approved the budget. We approved what, what the levy would be. This is to fund the budget that was approved back in April, beginning of this year. So the first part, you approve the budget, then we, then we approve the levy. We, the counties collect the money, and then we receive it next year for the, for the 2016, 2017 budget. All right, so getting into the figures, the general corporate levy is the same. It's going to be the same as last year, $6,433,000. I'll just go down the first column. The, the police pension levy is going to be, is going to increase $102,000. So that's going to go up to $1,254,000. Again, that's to keep us on track for the required funding according to our, our actuarial required contribution. And then our debt service levy is going to be the same as last year, flat. So the total increase is the $102,000 that's increased to the police pension. And then as it goes across the columns, the 2015 year, that's basically the levy plus the loss factor that the county adds. That shows the decrease, increase, decrease according to the, the extension from last year, and then the percentage and change. So the total increase over the, over last year's extension is just $8,000, and that works out to 0.09 percent. A big part of our levy is the proposed debts, is the proposed debt survey, service, levy and abatements. The 2007 bonds, again, was for the fire station. 2009 bonds were refunding for street projects, the village hall, water meters. And then the 2012 bonds were for the streets project. The $80,000 that's being abated from the fire station bonds, that's $29,000 from the Tiff District, and then $50,000 is from the fire district that kicks in for the portion of the districts that's outside of the village boundary. And then our $220,000 abatement is, is just the remainder to keep the total levy flat. So again, the total levy is the same as last year, $1,680,000. This is just a history of the, of the EAV. As you can see, our total estimated EAV, $1 billion, $22 million. We're estimating it's going to be up 6 percent. A lot of that, Cook County, we're estimating is up 12 percent. This is the triannual assessment for Cook County. So other communities that have been assessed, they were assessed last year, they were up about 12 percent. So we're estimating the same. DuPage County, we're estimating just 4 percent. So you can see the total back in 2006, $1.17 billion. We still haven't caught up to 2006. This is a, the rate, again, we don't, we don't set the rate. We calculate what the rate is, is estimated to be. We set the levy. But this is how the rate would be calculated. We're in Cook County, 38 and a half, 38 and a half percent basically times the, the levy, the loss allowance comes to the county portion of the burden. Take the county portion of the burden into how much EAV there is, and then we end up with the, with the tax rate, just over $1. Last year's tax rate was $1.13.
Too fast.
$1.13, so that's a reduction in 11, 11 cents. Or about 9.7 percent reduction in the rate. Okay, that's just the rate. DuPage County, same thing, 61.3 percent of the, of the burden, which is basically the levy plus the loss allowance. Misjudged calculation. 0.8888 cents per $100 of assessed value compared to last year's rate, 91 cents, down 2.9 cents, that's down 3.2. So the EAV in DuPage goes up 4 percent. We slightly increase our levy after the, the, the loss allowance is added, and that's why it's a down, the rate is down a little less. This is a combined rate. Nobody actually uses this rate. This is just combined DuPage and, and Cook County. But you can see it's just the average of the two. Here's the pie chart for DuPage County, showing that, rounding off a little bit, actual DuPage County, the village portion, came to 8.65 percent. You can see the school district there, 64 percent, and some of the other, some of the other districts. It's pretty much the school district. And Cook County, I rounded down with Cook County and up with DuPage. So Cook County was actually 8.53 percent. So the village is about the same total portion in both counties. The, the total, total tax rates is kind of, I don't know if you get into tax rates or not, but the total tax rate for Cook County was over 13 percent back in 2015, and the DuPage total tax rate was just over 10 percent, 10, or 10 and a half. The next step then, after this, these are basically the numbers. The next step would be bring it to the board meeting, and the estimated levy would be approved. We would advertise public hearing. Hold the public hearing December 6, and that's when the levy would be approved. The levy needs to be filed with the counties by the 4th Tuesday in December. That's, that's basically the proposed levy. The numbers are the same, pretty much, except for that police pension increase. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to take questions. Oh, pretty clear.
Do you anticipate that moving forward, that we're going to see increases in the, in the police pension obligation like, along these lines?
Okay, the, the increase in the police pension was, was due to, you, you get money from three different areas for the police pension. The, the police officers contribute part of their salary. There's investment income, and then there's our, the prior year, we had, we only had investment, our rate of return was over 4 percent, 4 and a half percent. Our assumed value, our assumed rate is seven and a quarter. So since we didn't meet that, we, we fell short, and that's why we have to pick up a little bit more on the contribution side from the taxes. That's the only other variable. Yeah, I don't, we're, we're doing good in the pensions. We're, right now, the new calculation, 77 percent funded. The old ratio, we're at 80 percent, which is, which is pretty good for most pension areas.
Okay, thank you.
So are you going to levy any amount for the Northwest Mosquito Abatement?
Are we going to levy any amount? This does not take into account the, the abatement?
No.
Or the mosquito district?
Can you elaborate on that at all, Mr. Maraz?
I, yes. So this was an issue that Trustee Hopkins had brought up, concerned that the Cook County portion of the village is double taxed in the sense that they pay taxes to the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District. And then although it's not levied separately, it is part of the budget. And what was in the budget was roughly $72,000 to pay Clark for services that they provide in DuPage County. And I wrote a memo relative to the statute that's out there relative to the abatement of taxes. So for it to really work how the statute shows, you would abate, you would levy an additional $44,085 when you look at the proportion of the number of taxpayers. So there are 8,300 taxpayers in DuPage and 5,785 in, in Cook. The statute that I've discussed with Trustee Hopkins and also Trustee Ranky says that they shall abate taxes. But I've met with the Cook County Clerk's Office, the manager of the tax assessment, tax extension division. And the problem is that practically speaking, they can't do it. My spoke was late with her as today. Now that, they would have to abate on a pin-by-pin basis, so 5,785 separate abatements. And their program does not allow for just plugging it in and doing it prorata. They have a 40-year-old mainframe. They're in the process of upgrading and engineering, the upgrade of their computer system. The most they've ever processed for an abatement is 2,000 for Chicago Housing Authority housing type abatements. So she tried to dissuade us from going that route and talked about rebates. Now, rebates, they can't do, Cook County Clerk's Office. The statute doesn't call for rebates, so we couldn't necessarily compel the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District to do separate abatements. And so those are some of the issues at hand. She urged that perhaps we would do some type of rebate process, set up something. But again, that's a, because it would be a burden on them, it would be a burden on us to be, you know, you need manpower to address those issues. But, so that's kind of where we're at now. Back to your first question. The last levy, you had 7,200, I think it was the 2014 levy. When you did the math, $44,085 would have been the equivalent. So this levy, as this was up in the air, I did not advise staff of where this were going to add an extra $44,085 to this particular levy and the estimate. The board could direct that. But I don't know how it will play out. As I said before, I'm reluctant to just write a check to Northwest Mosquito Abatement District for $44,000 some dollars in the expectation that the taxpayers will see it. If it's an abatement, there won't be a check to the taxpayer. There, apparently what'll happen is it'll show on a tax bill. Let's say they abated 100 percent. There'd be an asterisk on a tax bill. It'd still show their separate rate, but it would show $0. That's the easy way. It's conceivable that their next levy will be higher, and we'll always be in arrears. So if we send them a check for $40,000, $44,000, next year they levy 80, then there would be this partial abatement, and there would still be a line item for that year's portion of the bill, and you'd always be playing catch-up. So it's not a easy or a good solution. The number, I did not advise staff of this number, is it's kind of been a moving target, and I'm trying to pin down the county down. I went down and met with them, followed up on some things, and they talked to us late as today. So you can add that in. At least that way, you've got a total number. The alternative is that we look at processing some kind of rebate in the village. But, you know, there, one of the things you have to do is people would have to go through this step, prove that they actually paid their taxes, not just, I want an, an abatement or rather a rebate. And the county could help us show who paid their taxes. She could, they could do that much. But again, that's going to be a moving target from time to time. So people would have to go through the process, come in, here's, I'm in Cook County, here's my bill, I paid it. And you could pass some ordinance that says, you know, sets up a process by which they could receive a rebate. That's one way of doing it. We had talked about adding, taking it off of the DuPage, getting rid of the levy for mosquito abatement altogether. And alternatively, add a cost for mosquito abatement to the water bill, and I'm reluctant to do that. I think too many excuses not to pay a what. So I, I wouldn't advise that. But the rebate, you know, once you figure out the manpower to, to do that would be one way of, so there wouldn't be this double taxation for those, for the Cook County residents relative to mosquito abatement services.
Well, I think we need to do something because right now, obviously, we're in violation of the Illinois statute, and we need to address this issue. And I think it starts with writing a check to Northwest Mosquito Abatement, and the burden is on them. That's the way I read it. It's not on us. It's on them to abate the taxes. So I think we need to have this included in our levy, and we need to write a check to Northwest Mosquito Abatement.
Well, before we do that, let's see if we have the entire board support on this because I've heard a lot of other board members that really aren't behind this. And if it's not, it can't just be one board member... Absolutely not. ...to do this. So let's take a straw poll on this before we direct anybody to do anything with this abatement. So I guess the question would be, what would be the best way to do it?
Can I enter really quick? So do you interpret this as we are in violation? Yes or no?
No. I don't think it's a violation, but I think there's an argument that we are. I think there's, there's the language and some provisions of this say shall. I think one of the reasons we're not is because, well, I won't get into that. But I, I don't feel that we're in violation. I think it, it sets up a process that we could abide by, and it would put the burden on those other taxing bodies, or, you know, both the county clerk and, and the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District where they'd actually have to go through pin-by-pin. Give them the pin list and then say what the county clerk can do. But I'm reluctant to do that in part because they're telling me it can't be done. And so I hate to pay $44,000 and, and not accomplish what you're hoping to see.
Interesting. So if we're not in violation and the costs to cure this, which I agree with Trustee Hopkins, there is obviously some double taxation going on. But at, at some point, the cost of curing it is potentially going to cost the taxpayers more money than what the actual expense is. Is that accurate?
I don't believe that's accurate at all.
How much manpower do you think it would take to go through 5,700...
Not our burden. It's the burden is on Northwest Mosquito Abatement.
But I think our attorneys already mentioned that sending them a check would be futile.
It's not on us.
with the mosquito abatement if the majority of the board says that we don't want to have this discussion any longer. Okay? So, the bottom line is our attorney's saying no violation and we have spent, staff has spent some time on this from the request of just one trustee. So, what's the best way to phrase it?
Well, let me ask, so we're talking about $44,000. Is there a way to credit the Cook County tax levy, $44,000?
No, I ask.
No way to do that?
No, that's what I, that was my.
That's where we started.
That was the logical.
That was where we started.
Easy approach. The problem is their district and their boundaries are bigger than the village of Bartlett, Cook County. And so, any credit goes district-wide, not.
Well.
A portion in Bartlett. So, it has to be done on a pin-by-pin basis.
I'm talking about our property tax levy.
Our property tax, you can't levy or abate for a half. You abate across the whole village and we're three counties. So, that, therein lies the problem. She confirmed that today.
So, then you'd have 5,000 some hundred people coming, well, potentially 5,000 owners coming to the village hall saying, here, I paid my property tax bills, cut me a check.
You could set up a process where they could come in, prove they paid the taxes, and then do the calculation and cut them a check. That's what they were urging.
Putting anything in the water bill is a nightmare. I mean.
Yeah, I agree. I'm not in favor of that. I don't recommend you put it on the water bill, but you could do this rebate process. And at least, not everyone will come in. They may not figure it's worth the trouble for the $5 or $10.
But some businesses are actually paying hundreds of dollars.
That's correct. Because it's relative, so that was the problem, is it's relative to extending, calculating the assessed value against the rate, you know? It might be an average on a home payer, buyer of only, homeowner of only, say, $10, but the more the assessed value.
It's $8.
The bigger portion of, of the bill it would be.
And I think that's probably what you'd see is the ones that are getting charged.
Yeah, they may be the ones who come in.
Hundreds of dollars would be coming in and righting the wrong.
Because we're, you know, everybody talks about trying to help Cook County businesses because they are in Cook County. And this is one way, you could put hundreds of dollars into some businesses and it's a lot more than what we're doing now. So.
Can I make a suggestion? Can we get this process down? What our attorney is suggesting we do, where they bring in, prove that they paid their tax bill, and then we would cut them a check back? Is that, does that seem to be the easiest way to do it?
I don't think the burden's on us. It's on Northwest.
Well, if we do it as a rebate, it would be on us.
Yeah.
And that's one way that at least we know we'd have control of it, it would happen. Now, what the cost of doing that is, I don't know, but we do it for seniors on.
The utility tax.
On the utility tax. So, you know, we do it. They have to prove certain things that they file. The other thing that the county said is if you go through this process, you got to do that pin abatement every year. It's not something you can do on in the future.
That's not what we do. That's what Northwest Mosquito Abatement.
Right.
Needs to do. So, is there a way to send a legal notice to their attorneys and basically?
Not without sending the check.
Help them to follow the law?
Well, they're not in violation until we send them a check. So.
They will be.
Art of the process, we'd have to write the check. Pardon?
If we write them a check, they're in violation.
Well, we write the check and explain, here's what you have to do, here's the statute. We met with that one representative and gave them the statute and talked about the statute. Nothing came of that.
I mean, it sounds, I'm behind you when it comes to the double taxation issue, but it just sounds like it would be so problematic for the staff. I mean, we've talked about the water billing. President Walz brings this up every single budget cycle, you know, about how do we streamline the water billing and what a burden it is on staff and it's difficult. So, even, I mean, if we're having that problem with water billing, how are we going to handle this? I mean, I understand what you're saying. It should be the burden of the mosquito abatement district. It really should be, but if, if we send them the $44,000 and then they do nothing and sit on it, what are we going to do?
It'd cost a lot of money in court.
What about, what about the Cook County folks on the board? Are you going to then sue? Your proper remedy would be to sue the mosquito abatement district, get yourself a writ of mandamus to abate the taxes. And you're going to sue them in Cook County and.
They may do all that they're supposed to do. It may, in the process, it seems where it would block down would be at the county clerk level. Because they don't have the capability to process abatements in that large number. So, it's just a practical problem. That's been some of the holdup.
So, is it safe to say, Brian, that you're continually to discover and turn over boxes to ways to figure this out?
I'm, honestly, I'm at a, I'm at a, I think I'm going as far as I can with, with it. I think you're looking at two options. Write the check, Northwest Mosquito Abatement District, trust that they, that the county clerk can figure out how to get this done and we see what happens again. And then it would get applied to future bills, tax bills for the previous year. Or alternatively, we look at the village processing a rebate, but, you know, I think you'd have to factor in the kind of the manpower and the cost of doing that. And I don't know what that is. I don't know how many people would avail themselves, but I think you have a period of time within which they submit.
Oh, let me suggest either one of these has nothing to do with our levy right now. So, we'll go ahead and move on.
Well, I think the reason he's raised it is he asked if that $44,000 is included in the levy.
It's not.
It's not.
Yeah.
I just wanted to ask one quick question, just one. The $44,000 anyone's talking about, did someone ever compute what that really means to the individual taxpayer?
Depends on their tax bill.
If you take 5,600 divided by 44,000, it's about eight bucks.
Well.
But it's not. Some people would be $5 and some could be 200 depending on what your assessed value is.
If you've got a small pin, it's going to be worth a nickel. If you've got a big property, it could be hundreds of dollars.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Same rate for that taxing district across.
I just, it was like 520 bucks. I can't remember, but it was like that.
No.
It's not that much.
No.
No.
Homeowners, it's going to be anywhere from, like you said, $5 to $10 a year.
$10?
But for businesses that have a big EAV, you could be talking a couple hundred dollars.
Because if it was the same for each property, we could just.
Right.
Yeah.
Then it'd be easy.
Hand out the checks and check off your PIN.
Yeah.
Right.
You know?
Thank you.
So, we're going to write the check?
No, that doesn't, that isn't, that is not decided at the committee meetings.
The proposed 2016 property tax levy, are there any other questions that we may have on that? And.
I will be voting no on the levy if that's not included.
Anything else?
That's all we have.
All right, next item we have on committee meeting this evening is under Public Works Committee Chairman Camer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, tonight we have more information on the water study and I would like to turn this over to staff and our village administrator if I could.
Thank you, Trustee Camer. I thought what I would do is just bring all of you up to date on where we have been on that and also, I think for our audience this evening, this is a process that has been going on for several years of our research. And last January, the board selected a long-term option. And it wasn't DuPage and it wasn't Jawa, it was Elgin. And the board decided that they would get 100% of water from Elgin. You made that decision based on contractual negotiations with the then-city manager and the village of Bartlett that was a very positive contract for us. And what you folks said was go make it into a contract and bring it back. And we have spent the last frustrating almost year trying to do just that. And what has happened, and I think if anything, we're probably far too patient, but they have, they have new staff and there was sort of an incremental, I think is the right way to call it, additional items that were to be put in the contract that hadn't been there with the original contract, had not been there with the negotiated contract, and it was new and you hadn't seen it. And more importantly, it wasn't reasonable. And, and so, it was anything from additional studies that were very lengthy and expensive and we did not believe were our responsibility to wanting to enter into a minimum usage, which we have never had and those things can be very problematic in the future. And this is a 30-year contract. So, there were a number of those kinds of things and, and I finally decided that we needed to come back to the board and look at other options. What has happened during that interim, fortunately, is that the other options have morphed a little bit from the way you looked at it last year. We have DuPage that has new numbers and new ideas and, and are very much in the running. And Jawa, as you know, and the memos we send out, has, have reduced their rates even as, again, a couple of different times and Thursday after the agenda went out, they, they called and, and reduced their rates again. So, there really are a lot of pros and cons on, on each option. And I'm hoping that we could go through it again. A lot of this information that you, you have seen, but we want to highlight what the changes are in what we believe are two very important remaining options. We now have also the consideration of, of timeframes, which we did not have last time. We had plenty of time. And I don't know that Elgin would turn us off. I don't think they would. We still represent some important revenue, but we're supposed to be out of there in 19. So, certainly, an additional element of our consideration is the ability to get the pipes in the ground and turn it on. So, having said that upfront, I'll ask Dr. Burke, who's been through this journey with us, to tell us what's different.
Thank you, Valerie. Valerie did a great job in kind of setting the stage for what has taken place. As you recall, we were directed to work with Elgin. There's been a number of things that have transpired. There was originally a bargain or agreement that they would not put a surcharge if we purchased 100. That surcharge is if you, if you purchase 100%, it's 1.15. If you purchase anything other than 100%, it's the 1.25 surcharge that you currently are charged. You also recall, we talked about fixing the annual rate of increase, something that was very important for your budgeting process. That was taken off the table, the whatever rates they charged, whatever increase that would pass on. There's also a question, as Valerie said, about the minimal. They wanted you to guarantee that you would always take more and more and more water. That's a slippery slope. Everybody sees that we are seeing water conservation measures, water consumption across the board has decreased. That was not something that was desirable from a staff or legal perspective. And also, we had talked about earlier in our numbers assess, a second point of connection. You have one right now, we'd increase it, there would be a second one. When we were finalizing the agreement, we said, let's make sure we know where it is. There was a lack of specificity as to where that would be. In order to get that answer, there was going to be an $80,000 expenditure on your behalf to get that analysis done. And it was decided that that was not something you were interested in. So, those are issues that are still out there with Elgin. Then in, in the middle of this, as you heard from your residents, there was a taste in order issue, issue that came up and it's described there from June 13th to mid-July. In order to mitigate that problem, they went ahead and started using their wells. And prior to that, if you were Elgin, and the staff has argued, we only had one like that in 2013 and prior to that, we went another couple of decades without having one. So, their perspective is that was, there may be anomaly nationwide. There, this taste in order, algae bloom result in taste in order issues that are being seen and are, could be a trend that would be a problem in the future. We then started meeting, as Valerie said, with Jawa. Jawa confirmed that they submitted, when they submitted their 2015 proposal, which was $5.60, is still available. They reported that the city of Chicago had not increased the rate in July of 2016 and they talked about their agreements and where they were with the rate increase. That was the one issue that at the time, we were discussing, Elgin put the, puts concern into some of the board members. Then on October 26th, as Valerie said, there was additional information that was provided from, by their executive committee. They reduced the Bartlett rate to 540. It was probably previously 560 per thousand gallons. And they said that they would finance the portion of the water main improvements that are necessary to hook you up to Jawa. Now, you have to do some internal, but that portion of improvements that got you their water were going to be financed and added to your bill. And so, that, there was about $16.9 million. So, these were things that they added on at the most recently, in the very recent past. So, also, as Valerie said, we have met with the gentlemen that are here today. Commissioner Chair and Commissioner Zay met with us along with Mr. Spats and they identified the opportunity to finance the buy-in fee. That was always a stumbling block. They would finance it over time and include that in the water rate that we provided here today. And we've estimated that would be 30 years at a 0% interest rate. They are, they stated, and they're consistent with the way they handle all the communities, there is no mixing of groundwater, well water and surf, Lake Michigan water. So, that would not be an option if it was decided to do that 50-50 option. They stressed, and I've already, I don't think I can do a better job than Mr. Zay already did about the benefits of the commission and the relationship they have with the city of Chicago being the largest customer. We all, they also indicate that the buy-in fee would be 480 and that plus the 38 cents, which is a financing, and that's how the 518 that you're going to see on subsequent charts is come, is. They want to make sure that they, I emphasize, and I think you already heard it, the one thing that they take exception to, I suppose, is the fact that we're not reporting the 480. We're including that 38 cents, which is the equivalent buy-in fee. What we did is we updated all these numbers. You already heard from Mr. Zay that the Water Commission has two connections, the city of Chicago water system and that they have funded, already funded five-year plan. So, what does that shortlist look like now? When you include that, you can see that the 100% Elgin number has risen over time as the concessions that we believed we were, had negotiated have been taken off the table and the uncertainty of having to do some things that may not be in your long-term interest, like agreeing to a minimum. So, what we've done is identify it. We identified it at two rates. One is your current rate and one is that three, which is 3.2 million gallons per day. One is 3.9 million gallons per day. If you're buying more water or using more water, then the numbers obviously are reduced. So, we included these and tried to normalize the numbers. And what it jumps out here is that no longer are the Lake Michigan water connections anomalies and high outliers. They are right in the mix with the other options that you had been discussing over the last several, or last couple of years. What we also did in here is identify, just for future reference, and I've already said this, you can see the numbers here. The Elgin numbers have gone up over the last couple, last year specifically, and that the other numbers from Jawa and the Water Commission have been reduced. These are virtually identical. I'm circling the Jawa and Water Commission. That dime is certainly within the margin of error of polling. So, these are identical numbers for conversation purposes here today. So, what we did is we looked at that and give you a comparison of how we've gone along over this period of time. This is a suffering of the different options. I know that you've looked at this already. You can see that the numbers that we reported on the previous page are identified here. The capital improvements are also included along with the current water purchase rate. You can. You can see in this area, once again, this is the number that is already, the Water Commission, its number is the lowest, and that is with the bump on the buy-in fee being amortized over 30-year period. The sources, once again, we have the Fox River being the source for Elgin. We've discussed a lot about that. Lake Michigan being for Jawa and the Water Commission. If you go to and look at the blended 50-50 rate, you can see that that includes a little bit of the river and Lake Michigan, and in some cases, during certain periods of time, certainly well water from Elgin being used. You can identify, all the rest of the different things are identified. We included, as been discussed, the risk of the algae blooms is relatively low with a large water body like Lake Michigan. So what we've done, to summarize this, we've identified the pros and cons. You've seen these before. The pro is what the reason why you started looking at Elgin to begin with. It was a long-term partner in providing water supply to the village. Under this scenario, as well as the other ones, you would have the same source of water. They are, the capital costs are lower based on what we know now. We're not certain about the second connection. We've included the numbers that we thought were reasonable. Those could get increased. It's independent of the City of Chicago control of the water and supply rates. The cons are exactly what I said. We don't normally know where we're connecting. We just use assume connection at this point. Fox River is certainly susceptible to algae. And Elgin does not have a ordinance that would limit the increases. If you go back in time, in our previous presentations, you can see the spikes that they, you had. They've been relatively stable, and they are zero this year. The Jawa pros are identified here, and in blue on your handout, we've identified, and up there are the recent changes. They lowered their rate to 540, and that puts you within the range of the effective rates that the members are paying, the members of that organization. Under this option, as well as the Water Commission, all the residents of the town would get the same Lake Michigan water, the same source of water. The current city ordinance limits future rates to Jawa. The location allows for stage construction, because you have two locations for Jawa. Jawa is willing to finance it, those public sector or those components I described a couple of minutes ago. As they also wanted us to point out, it is included. These are things that, not all the things that they identified are included in here. They wanted to point out, like Mr. Zay did, that they're governed by their municipal members, and that they would have two separate transmission lines running to the village. The cons, you would not be a voting member of Jawa. They do have some recognized, long outstanding, recognized debt obligations from recently constructed projects, and the City of Chicago could change their ordinance and increase the rates. On the Water Commission, and you've heard many of these already articulated by Mr. Zay, you would become a voting member of the Water Commission. We said, as we said, we already said, it's much less susceptible to algae blooms than the Fox River. The current rate is low and very, the lowest of all the alternatives. And we included the buy-in fee there. They've indicated that they are open to doing the prorated buy-in fee and all those other things that are articulated there. Mr. Zay did a much better case of putting in the cons as to why the Water Commission is a very favorable location. Let me, the cons are very similar to the Jawa, the alternative that requires a buy-in fee, but we included that in your numbers. That buy-in fee is included in the numbers. There is a long-distance connection. Both Jawa and the Water Commission require 20,000 to 25,000 feet of water main being constructed off-site. Both of them require almost very similar lengths. And once again, the City of Chicago could change the ordinance. The 50-50, I won't spend a lot of time on, but this accommodates a little bit of both the options that we discussed. It would still require that you have river water coming in. It's highly unlikely that you would get any reduction, and we're hoping just to have the same surcharge from Elgin that you have right now, the 25%. And of course, the downside of that is that the residents are going to receive two different types of water throughout the village, and you still have the potential for taste in water issues that you had this summer. And finally, the same caveats and cons associated with the Jawa, as far as the debt obligations are highlighted there. The rest of the report, the PowerPoint, and I'm not going to spend any time talking about unless there's a specific question, identifies all the assumptions that we made. We have provided this document to all three of the potential water suppliers, asking for their comments, and that's why we got comments. Some of them you heard tonight, some were provided in writing to us last week. But we wanted to make sure that everybody knew how we got to the numbers that we have presented here today. But the issue here, I guess, is you now have two extremely viable, and from an engineering perspective, identical options for you to get water at an almost identical rate.
So if I understand this correctly, then if we were to pursue a 50-50 Elgin-Jawa split, we wouldn't have to bring in a second main connection, would we, for Elgin?
That's correct.
That's correct.
And so we would save considerable money with that, too, wouldn't we?
And that's what we included in that number. You would still have that first connection. We would probably increase that and construct one leg of the Jawa line that we've identified in previous reports.
And with that option, if the algae bloom comes back, are you able to shut off Elgin and 100% Jawa? Is there that flexibility?
Probably not.
Probably not.
Why not?
Well, because the line that we're constructing is not, we could do that if we constructed that second line. And in, let me just, there's the one exhibit. I thought maybe there would be some questions about this, so I have an exhibit that shows markets in there, right? The exhibit showing the, okay. In this particular case, you would construct one of the Jawa lines, but you can't force all the water. We have, in the case of Jawa, we have those two red lines. That would be necessary to construct 100%. So you can't just force all the water in on one line and pressurize your entire village system. So that's the downside of going 50-50.
I wanted to ask the cost that you have here. I just really have looked at this a number of times, and I'm still confused. So help me. The buy-in fees and additional fees for any construction are all broken down, and they're reflected in the cost per thousand gallons that we have outlined here?
Yes, based on everything that we've been provided by the three providers.
So all of the associated costs are all here? Thank you.
And do we know why the DuPage Water Commission is against having a 50-50 splint?
All our customers, we require them to get all of their supply. They decide they can supply from us, they take all of this.
And there's a particular reason for that, just that's what you've set up?
Would you go over the mic?
Yeah, I didn't hear that at all.
The concern would be combing in the water, and who's at fault if there's a problem with the water? So we generally try to stay away from that. We require that our customers take all their supply from us. And then we'll generally have dual sources feeding them if there's a problem.
When we were talking about this previously, I brought up the issue of duplicity, and I thought that it seemed reasonable to think that if you had two different water sources, if there was some sort of a toxic spill or something like that, never occurred to me there'd be an algae bloom, but it kind of reinforced in my mind the valid point that having two sources can make sense, simply from the standpoint that if something happens, you can shut off one line and bring in water from the other. And that still concerns me to a degree about just having one source of water and not knowing, you know, what could happen in the age that we live in, whether it's a chemical spill or who knows what, you know, or another algae bloom. We got all kinds of complaints for weeks about that algae bloom.
And that's a very good point, and I would agree wholeheartedly with that. So in our case, a lot of our customers, I shouldn't say a lot, some of our customers kept their well system as a backup system. But now you've got to maintain that system in case you ever need to use it. So over the years, some of them stopped maintaining it and said, we're just going to go to you. So if you were to join us, my recommendation would be you would probably cap your wells, but have them available if needed in an emergency.
Which is one of the things we've talked about, at least initially, as you're fine-tuning the system, to keep the investment that you have in your wells at least online for as long as it makes economic sense.
I think mixing the sources 50-50 or whatever is problematic, because not every resident of Bartlett gets the same quality of water. During this bloom, the people in Westridge suffered, people on the west side of town, Amber Grove, they suffered terribly out there. And I got some of that in, you know, where I live, but my water's different than your water, and that just, that doesn't make any sense to me. So it makes sense to have a backup, but the notion that we're all going to have, you know, slightly different water, that's...
I agree with that.
Yeah, that's a mess.
I would have to agree with that also. Is there a way to stay connected to Elgin in case of an emergency? Turn it on?
Yeah, we have an emergency connection with Elgin now, and we'll be getting one with Streamwood, so we'll have several emergency connections.
And I would, I'll ask the question, I don't think that they would object if you went with the Water Commission to have an emergency connection where you would be able to feed Elgin Lake Michigan water in the event of a problem there?
Yeah, we have emergency connections right now for some of the people with Jawa. So when they were just relocating that line with the expressway, they couldn't get water to their customers, so we supplied Schaumburg water. And then we also let Schaumburg supply Outgrow some water during their reconstruction of their line.
So one of the things I'd like to talk about, too, is, you know, we have all these estimates for costs of capital expenditures, you know, right construction. So construction is notoriously subject to unknown factors. I mean, how firm are you when you have your assumption for construction costs?
Well, certainly, you're absolutely correct. There is fluctuations in the cost of construction. I believe that we've seen a dip back down, maybe it's just temporary, in the underground construction, but it had gone up considerably in the last six to nine months compared to the previous four years, perhaps. We have included contingencies to identify unknowns. We have worked with the Jawa. We're using the unit prices. And we've tried to come up, and I think you guys have had a chance to look at our unit prices on the cost estimate for the construction as well.
Yeah, we had actually designed the line to run this way and went out and got construction costs, but that was quite a while ago, so it'd be, make sense to go look at the design, update the design, get updated construction costs.
Do you want to touch on that, because that was not included here? You guys actually designed at one time a water line that would do what we're talking about here. So they have identified the route. They've identified, they surveyed it. Now, it's 10 years, a decade out of date. That would have to be refreshed, but to the extent that they've identified a route that, you know, satisfied the utility conflicts of the day, that helps in estimating the cost for some of these.
Let's save on engineering costs?
Yes, we had actual construction. We went, we bid it, and we had construction cost also that came in.
So...
And how exactly would that construction operate? Are we talking about digging a trench and laying a pipe? Are we talking about underground? I mean, how does, how would that...
They would dig a trench and put a four-foot pipe in. Part of that at the time was looking at redundancy for our system if we had other customers up in this area. So if there was other people interested in tying on, that could actually reduce the cost for you.
Is there?
Not that, not that we know of, more down towards Aurora. So, one of the concerns, though, that we had, and it's totally up to you, but if you go back the slide where you have all the cost, our cost is 480 our customers. When I asked, they put a note in there that, just a note, whether it's 30 years, in 30 years, part of our cost goes away. The buy-in cost goes away, the other costs don't. The other part, too, is since our construction cost in the presentation was slightly higher, when the construction cost goes away, a bigger portion of that number that's on our rate right now goes away. And I just, I thought that was important. The other thing is, we're not necessarily comparing apples with apples. Northwest Jawa, they also have a buy-in cost, if you want to be one of their members. You know, it's totally up to your board, but if you're making a long-term commitment, be part of an organization. Have a say, have a vote. It may cost you a little bit more upfront, but like in our organization, you're not only guaranteed that you're part of the organization, you have the right to the water. So in other words, we're not going to call one day and say, well, you know, we can't supply you. We make sure that we keep enough for growth in DuPage, and then when it grows, we're not going to turn around and say, okay, you got to pay us more. So I think those are important. I mean, just becoming a customer, we pump 70. They pump in the area 30. You're a bigger portion to them. Would you not want to have a say if rates are changing? Like, you know, ours is simple. Whatever everyone else in DuPage is paying, that's what you guys are going to pay. So I think that's important. We never discussed with our board, what if you guys didn't want to be a member, you just wanted to, we supplement you with some water. I don't know if that would be viable, but that is something that we didn't get a chance to take back to our board.
I think that part of the problem that we have with Jawa is that we don't have an option to be actually a member of Jawa, correct?
No.
Yeah.
A customer, exactly. So you're right, but you mentioned that it may cost more money to buy in. That's not an option for us. We can't, we can't buy into Jawa as a member.
You can. In the first presentation, their buy-in cost was almost identical to our buy-in cost.
They've waived their buy-in cost.
What is it, then?
Jawa.
You would still not be a member under the scenarios that we presented or have been offered to by Jawa. So just to be clear, that the document that we prepared does not include the buy-in to become a member. It's strictly the cost to purchase water as a user. That is the difference.
So we were able to be a member of Jawa if we paid money?
We'd be a voting member, though. Clarified member.
Okay, now, I've got, I hate to say it, but we've got one gentleman shaking his head.
Your last presentation, their buy-in cost for you to become a member was exactly, is the same as our buy-in cost to become a member. This presentation, what they're showing is, you're not becoming a member, you're just becoming a customer, and you'll have no voting right. You'll have no say.
Is that correct? I mean, I don't remember, that's not correct, though?
No, we've never had the ability to have, to be a full member and have voting rights in Jawa. We knew from the very beginning, and I would say that that's a significant con, that we would never have the ability to do that. They had the buy-in fee in place during our first review of this over a year and a half ago, and they have subsequently waived the buy-in fee, and it has no impact whatsoever on us being a full member.
Why can't we become a member?
We, I suppose we could, and if we're using, if we're comparing apples to apples, we would have to prorate that 14-some-odd million dollars over 30 years, and that if they were to agree, and I have no reason to believe they would agree, to give you 0%. But as an example, it would be a minimum of .38 per thousand gallons more than the numbers that we presented tonight.
Well, that's one of the things that bothered the board before, was not being a voting member.
That's exactly right. That's always been the case, and it's always been a con, I think, relative to Jawa.
So Dr. Burke, you were saying that the Jawa would go up to 578 a gallon?
Okay. And that would be if they agreed to be the same... Okay, and that would be if they agreed to be the same as the water commission, that they would finance that buy-in fee over 30 years for zero, and it would be a minimum of 38 cents per thousand gallons. It could be more, I don't see, unless they waive the entire fee and welcome you in as a, if they did that, if they would waive it, the numbers would be exactly as I presented. The only thing, the con, would be removed.
But that's not on the table from them?
We have not had that discussion.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, Mr. Spatz is identifying that 38 cents, and his point, that I probably did not articulate well enough, is that eventually that goes away. After you've paid that buy-in fee, that goes away and is no longer a cost. So, at some point in time, within your contract, or you don't have a contract under this arrangement, you are a member, that goes away, and you have a reduction.
Let's talk about the buy-in fee for the DuPage Water Commission. There's a range between 13 and 16 million dollars. The $3 million range is still a lot of money. So, what's the deciding factor? What's our real number?
When I seen the first presentation, I think there were kind of projections, some growth, so they were, they were using a higher flow rate coming to you, and I recommended that your buy-in fee, you pay based upon when you join. So, if you're pumping 3.2 million, don't estimate 3.9 million, because that's raising it to 16 million. If you're pumping 3.2 when you join, that's what your buy-in will be based, that's what the 13 million is.
Okay, so even if we grow to 3.9?
You can grow to twice as much after you originally, your buy-in doesn't change after you originally joined the commission.
Okay, thank you.
You're telling residents not to use very much water the first year.
Well, and let's talk about that 3.9 million, because I noticed, I noticed that in your, in your chart, is that where we see ourselves?
Where are we at right now, 3-2?
We're 3-2, but where are we going?
Well, certainly, we, and the first time I ever came here, we showed the projections. I don't see that those projections are probably reasonable. If Mr. Spatz believes that the CMAP projections are accurate, he can nod his head. But really, we see that the numbers have plateaued, the water use per resident, per capita, has plateaued. People recognize that grass grows back, you don't have to saturate it. The high numbers that you guys had a decade ago might have been reflective of people putting sod in, a lot of new homes, and those spikes that we saw were probably indicative of it. I think that the staff consensus is that we probably will not be on the trajectory that we originally anticipated based on the recent years, and I see all three of them nodding their heads.
I can just talk for DuPage.
We budget for a 2% loss in consumption each year, and in the last five years, we're right on target, so 10% lower. Hence, you becoming a customer puts, you know, a little of that percent back, 4% back or something.
What year does Elgin cut us off, 2019?
Yes.
That's the end of our contract with Elgin.
The end of the contract?
In May.
So, since the DuPage Water Commission has actually done some engineering?
They have.
Could we venture to say that we could get the DuPage Water Commission water project faster?
No, I think the problem in saying that is that there's right-of-way, and right-of-way, as you know, can be very lengthy, particularly lengthy if there is some sort of condemnation. And so, I don't want to say that it's going to be a lot longer, and certainly, there's some right-of-way for the other 50% with Jawa. We can get the first 50%, if you show that map, from Jawa right, pretty close. It's right there, and there's no right-of-way. And so, that's my only concern in terms of timeframe. Now, as I said before, I think that we would be okay continuing to take Elgin's water until we were able to move ahead with DuPage, but I think DuPage is going to be longer than Jawa. I don't know how much longer.
Care to comment on that?
Oh, I'm...
The only comment I have is she's 100% right. Right-of-way takes a while. I mean, we could push it, try to get it done sooner, but you're right, right-of-ways take a little bit of time. They probably started looking at some of it, but they didn't get the right-of-ways when they, when they bid it, so.
I've got to bring this up as far as, it's not directed at you, actually, it's just directed at the process, that it's been good to have you guys here and give you your comments, but I don't know how fair it's been to Jawa or to Elgin for that matter as well, and how, if we're showing some sort of preferential treatment to you guys with you being here, allowing you to speak like you're speaking, and that concerns me a little bit.
They were given this handout to review ahead of time, and they could have come.
Could we have...
They were invited, Jawa was invited?
Nobody's really...
And part of our concern was, the presentation had a lot of comments from Northwest Jawa, and none of our comments, so part of the reason we want to definitely show that we're definitely interested in this project, and be here to answer any of the questions that may, since they didn't make the presentation. We didn't meet at the end of October, and then all of a sudden, I get a presentation the day before you're going to meet, trying to justify how did all this change.
All right, this wasn't, let's make a deal, let's see what Jawa had, and let me go back to my board and say, "Okay, let's roll the dice, where do we want to go?" And that's what we feel like Jawa did, that they looked at our rate and saw that we were considerably lower in the first draft that we have and all you had, and all of a sudden decided that we're going to change it up. So, that's what we said about a fair playing field, that's what we thought was important to come today.
I think Trustee Cameron brings up a good point, and I would like to suggest that we do invite Elgin and Jawa to a next committee meeting, just to see, A, if they come, and we have to say...
I think, I think that's a good point. I do want to clarify, though, that you raised the issue of clarity and openness on this, and we have been from the very beginning, from three years ago when we started this, and we've probably had 15 public hearings and meetings on this, absolutely open about this. You're right, that is what Jawa did, but we have provided the same information at the same time to everyone from the beginning.
Right, and then I assume when you have the meeting next time, that we can send a revised statement, and if I go talk with my board and say, "We have $154 million in the bank, I can finance your construction, too," and I'm pretty sure they'll say yes on that. So, I mean, that's, that's why we won't, you know, I'm not, I'm not here, we didn't come here to say, "Let's make a deal." We came here to say, "We're very, you know, interested in getting you as a part of the DuPage Water Commission, and we think we've got a good product and a good organization, and we think you'd fit in well. We want you to be, I know you have two outstanding members that are on the commission, Mayor Savarino is the commissioner in this area, and David Russo from Winfield, so you'd also be in the process, that every, you know, two or four years, those municipal representatives are voted on by the, by mayors and managers, they have their meetings like they do on other commissions, that there'd be usually a rotation of those, that each municipality gets a seat at the table over a certain amount of years."
One of the things I'm concerned about now is timing, because I noticed on the, on the first page, and we've talked about this before, we have that $450,000 US EPA grant that's going to go away if we don't use it before the spring, and that's exactly what we ran up against with the Spalding Quiet Stone, right? Otherwise, that million dollars was gone. So, are we going to be on target if we, if we kick this to another...
No, I think you are. You still have some time, but I would like to see us wrap this up, so that our first expense with whomever the board decides to move with will be the utilization of that grant.
I would kind of wonder what other questions we might come up with, if we do go committee again. Does, we've been talking about this for a year and a half. It's been changing, it's been moving, so it's justifiably...
Better.
Yeah, some of it was out of our control, some of the people had, had a carrot and pulled it away.
Is there actually an offer from, from Elgin? I mean, do they have anything on the table, or are we just, just waiting for them to come back?
No, I think what we have on the table is what I brought to you in the first place that was very favorable, but they have made it clear that a lot of that's coming off the table, and they are incrementally, I think is the right term, putting more things on the table. So, it's very difficult to tell you where we are with them.
Okay, thank you.
I think the last, that study that Dr. Burke mentioned, 80,000, they said they would split that, but that was after the blooms and the whole nine yards, and it didn't make sense to deal with that issue when we had, they brought up these minimums that were frankly unrealistic. And so, until we solve the minimum, we weren't going to spend another $40,000, you know, if we couldn't get past the minimum, and we haven't. So, that's kind of where we're at.
Good that we will put, we will, we invited no one to this, and as you know, we'd never have, but we're always pleased to have open meetings. We will invite everybody for the next meeting, and hopefully, we'll get all the information and all the questions answered, and get some direction.
Yeah.
And is that going to be at the committee level, or are we going to bump it up to the, to the board? Committee?
Does everybody feel comfortable about a vote on this in, in two weeks?
Well, is, is DuPage Water Commission and Jawa going to have the opportunity to meet and confirm, be able to come back at the next village board meeting and have a final...
That will happen.
I don't have a problem with "Let's make a deal" if it saves our residents money.
That's right.
"Let's make a deal, let's do it." Whoever that is.
You'll put it on the next one. Would you like it on Boarder Committee? Trustee Ranky?
I think if you're going to discuss pros and cons, the committee setting is really...
I think one more committee.
You're losing, yeah.
Get that vote going the first week of December.
Right, that makes more sense.
Okay.
And I just want to thank staff, you know, maybe this is a blessing in disguise that we're having this situation with Elgin right now, and we have an opportunity to look at this one more time, because I know that the algae bloom that we just experienced with the Rex River water, it was very, very difficult for some of the businesses here in our community. And I know, in our, in our house alone, we couldn't even brush our teeth, it was that bad, you know, and I know the mayor and I had talked about possibly even using carbon filters, picking those up and doing some special...
Yeah, and I think that we, I think it would be wise for us, just because there's going to be a while before we get more water that works, is to have some kind of a plan in place, if this happens again, this bloom, that it's just an automated thing where residents know they can swing by the village and pick up a filter or something, you know, something like that. Let's not make it complicated, right, but let's have some, for the businesses and the people that don't have water filtration systems, have something there. Because that was, that was terrible.
Yeah, it was. It really was.
Are there any other questions for staff or Dr. Burke? If not, then that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Burke. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming out from DuPage. Appreciate the information, it helps a tremendous amount when we can ask questions, as you can tell, so thank you for coming out.
That's all I have, Mr. Burke.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Trustee Cameron, seconded by Trustee Hopkins, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonell?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?